Underwriting support for this program is provided by the Eureka Teachers Association's School Board Liaison, Philip Middlemiss. Thank you.
Okay, so, we have a lack of quorum tonight. There were two members gone on a prepaid vacations that had been scheduled a year ago. And then Fran got a telephone call about a half an hour ago with a family emergency, and she had to leave. She had no choice. So, we're going to not be able to have a meeting tonight, but we could still listen to the speakers if they wish to speak. We're gonna have this meeting moved to February 28th at 5 o'clock. So it's up to the speakers if they wish to speak tonight or come back on the 28th.
What I would say is, is the speakers, it'd be similar, most like to a town hall meeting, so it would not be part of a regular board meeting minutes, but we would certainly be glad to take down anything that the speakers say and share that, but it would not be memorialized as part of a board minute, board meeting.
There will be notes taken, and the other board members will see the notes.
But you would also have the option instead of coming back on the 28th if that's what you prefer to do?
So do you want to see who's on there, John, and give them, maybe we could call them by name and they can make a decision to come forward and speak to the mic and follow that process?
Okay, Ryan Comer.
Oh, we should do the pledge, huh? Brian, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
Come on out. I knew that you'd follow through.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cadet Ryan Comer, and I'm the Executive Officer of the Eureka High NGRC Program. Before I joined this program, I knew very little about the military, so little that I probably wouldn't have had the guts to enlist into the United States Marine Corps and be on my way to boot camp this coming August. But now I have a stronger sense of direction for my career path, and I don't have to worry about what I'm doing after high school. Some of my fellow students that don't have the career guidance this program has to offer are absolutely terrified to graduate because they don't know what they want to do or have plausible ideas for their career path. And many other students that I've spoken with know so little about our armed services, and because of that, plenty of them have a negative and very inaccurate view of what the military is about. So because our program is a military-style class, they are all too ready to pass judgment and make their own interpretation, that we're being taught how to be robotic and live a lifestyle that they understand to be aggressive and immoral. Only a small number of these students portrayed qualities of good citizenship and strong leadership values. I know for myself that without the experience this program has given me, I could very easily have the same uninformed mindset and the same lack of self-fulfillment that they do. I'm sure the other cadets of NGRC who have grown so much as individuals and have a better understanding of the purpose of our military would agree that a program like this is essential to our future. It's absolutely imperative that the youth of America should have the opportunities this program offers, so that they can choose to partake in military service for good standing. And even those who choose not to serve can still have the characteristics that are necessary to prosper in this nation and to have success in their career that could not be achieved without good worth ethic, perseverance, and determination. Taking away this program takes away from today's youth the values and ideals that are what make this country great. Thank you.
Nathan McCaslin.
I am Nathan McCaslin. I'm a cadet and a staff member in NGRC. So, my speech is like a compiling of notes, so it might not seem too fabulous, but here we go. As a young junior high kid, I wasn't too fond of school, and one day I decided to think smart. Maybe it happened for a split second, but it happened. And I decided to drive my career, like, in my future. I wanted to do something, and I knew I wasn't gonna just do it on my own, and I had to pick something that forced me to do it. So I decided to join or enroll in NGRC, and that's what I did. And I could've went to any other school, and it wouldn't have really mattered to me, but this school offered NGRC, and that to me really, an elective really helped me to become a better person. For instance, I'm scared just for a lot to be up here. So, I feel like when a school has electives, it really draws kids in. Now, when people cut electives from a school, it actually takes students away from that school, because most people don't show up for English or math or science, in some cases they do. But any school offers that. I could've went to Pacific View or St. Bernard's, 'cause I actually was offered to go there, or here, and I decided to go here, because it had NGRC. So, when classes like that get cut, it actually does more harm to a school than good. So loss of electives equals loss of students, and for people who are concerned with their career or want to gain skills, this is a good school to go to. And if NGRC was eliminated ahead of other classes, I know people like me, even my younger brother who would want to go here one day, would not be going here. All right, that's all I have to say.
Okay, Kathy Canapaw and Stephanie Carroll.
I'm Kathy Canapaw, a senior at Eureka High.
And I'm Stephanie Carroll, also a senior at Eureka.
And we just completed our senior project, which was Exchange Student Assembly.
So what our assembly was, is we got all of our seven exchange students here at Eureka High, like, we had one from Brazil, Norway, Sweden, Germany, and I'm pretty sure that's all. And we had them present in front of our whole school body at optional assemblies of their life back at home, like, their school and their home life and what their town was like.
And this was to encourage people to get engaged in exchange programs and encourage students at Eureka High to participate in language classes.
And all of it, all four assemblies were very successful. We had met a lot of student involvement, and they asked a lot of questions, and they really, and a lot of people came up to us after and said that they really enjoyed learning about this stuff that they might not have known of before.
And so, another one of our goals was to get our student body to recognize new faces on our campus, and we think that more people are now open to talking to these students, whereas before they didn't even know that they were on our campus, so.
And hopefully, we want other people at the school to continue on this, because we thought it was a good opportunity for them to learn about other countries and to go and enroll in our language classes and be a part of that.
And that's it.
Thank you.
Taylor Schughart.
Okay, so, I'm here to talk about my senior project, which is a digital historical mural project of Humboldt County. And I'm in 12th grade, and I'm, go to Eureka High School. And basically what it is, is it's a photographic timeline of Humboldt County from 1850 to 2000 that I created on Photoshop, and several historians such as Ray Hillman and Jerry Rody helped, helped me create a captions banner that correlates with the photos and kind of guides the reader through what's happened through, from 1850 to 2000. And our plan, my plan for it right now, I've submitted a grant to the Humboldt Area Foundation, and they should be reviewing it, I think, at the end of this month, so hopefully I'll hear from them soon. And the plan is to reproduce it, and I'd like to give it to local elementary schools and libraries, and the Historical Society has also asked for a copy of it. And I'm pretty sure its 4th grade or 3rd grade curriculum is centered around local history, so it could be helpful for kids. It's aesthetically pleasing, there's pictures they can look at, and they can also read the captions. So, I just kind of wanted to talk about that, and I guess that's it. I don't know, are there any questions about it?
How long is it?
It's 12 feet long, and each, it's split up into 50-year periods, so there's the 50-year periods, and then the banners just are, it's 14 inches wide, 12 feet long, and then the captions banner that goes with it is 5 inches wide and 12 feet long, so. And it was displayed at Old Town Coffee and Chocolates for the November Arts Alive and mounted on foam board. And probably when we give it to elementary schools, just because of the humidity and the cold weather, I guess, rainy weather, we would mount it on foam board and then have like a sort of wooden frame, so it doesn't bend and get warped over time. So, that's it.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Very good. Charles Young in Limited Edition.
Over the last few months, the Limited Edition has performed during the Christmas season, we performed at a little over 35 gigs around, around town for different businesses and community organizations. Between Friday and Monday, excuse me, yesterday, wow, Tuesday, we performed at over 210 performances around the community. And the nice thing was that not only did we take care of individuals, you know, for the Valentine's celebration, but also the, we went into businesses, and in a lot of ways, while we may have been singing to one person, oftentimes the audience was many, many more people than that. And I felt like that my, my students represented themselves very, very gracefully and professionally, and that has been a, across the board statement about the students that are here. This is a small representation of the, of my group, and I'd like to have two of them speak to you about, this body gave permission for this group to travel to Chico recently and sing at Honor Choir, NorCal Honor Choir. So I'd like the two gentlemen to speak about that before we sing for you.
I didn't exactly come up with anything, but being a musician, I've gotten pretty good at making things up on the fly, so. I've been in music ever since 7th grade, and when Mr. Young eventually became my teacher in sophomore year, life took a different turn for me because of what he offered. I joined Limited that year, and it helped me decide what I'm gonna do after, after high school. I plan on attempting to pursue a musical career, and although that will be strenuous at best, it will be fulfilling in a way I probably could never really describe to you. So, enjoying having just something set up and how easy it is, it gives me an appreciation for what it's gonna be like when I have to try and pursue my own kind of musical career, not having a group set up or music offered for me to just play right there. It's, it really is something that I will be forever grateful for. And then the opportunities for the traveling, I mean, last year we went to Boston. Here's my t-shirt I got from it. I mean, I will never have that exact same experience, but having that experience, it will help me pursue to have more of them. And then the Honor Choir, as Mr. Young said, it was another experience, being able to sing with 100 other students who cared as deeply as much as I do about their music, it was absolutely life-changing, and I think everyone in the world should have that experience. Thank you.
Hi, my, my name is Trevor Lynn. I've been, well, I've been in, taking music classes kind of since 3rd grade over at Cutton, but music has really always been a big part of my life, and gone back between instrumental to singing choirs to musical theater and all three at once sometimes. But for Honor Choir and kind of, yeah, the Honor Choir experience we had just a week and a half ago over in Chico, we sang in a group of, I believe it was 111 high school kids from across Northern California, and let me tell you, I have never had an experience quite, shall we say, magical, as that has, that was for me. And while I'm not thinking about pursuing music as a career or even majoring it in college, that experience over in Chico State definitely kind of made me think about pursuing it just kind of secondarily, but still really committed to it just throughout my life. So, thank you for letting us do that. It was really quite amazing.
So you are officially our last Valentine. I feel like I mentioned that the rest of the quartet is Jennifer Lickdie and Arlie Aguilar, so thank you very much for your time. You guys performed at our Rotary Annual Christmas Dinner again, and you were very, very impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Goodnight. Dylan Rubin.
Hello, my name is Lieutenant Junior Grade Graven of Eureka NGRC. I'd just like to talk about certain things we do for the community too. We do community service. We help out Toys for Tots every year for Christmas. We work with the Marine Corps League. We log in a lot of hours. I logged in personally around 120 or so hours. We're like, we're one of the few classes that actually have the community service that like give people community service to actually earn their cord, their graduation cord for community service. I know other people do that too, but we're the one, major ones that actually go around the community, help out. Without us, if we, if we lose the program, a lot of communities would be, like, a lot of things in the community would be affected. Like, I know one for sure, the Marine Corps League, when I was at one of their meetings, they talked about if we didn't have you guys, we wouldn't know what to do, because there's so many stations to be filled out and everything to do. We helped out so many families last year and everything. Besides just us, if we were to get cut, it's also the community too, be a big impact on them besides just us too. So, hopefully don't cancel us next year. Thank you very much.
Ashlyn.
Good evening. My name's Ashlyn Wintergrotov. This is my junior year. I've joined NGRC my freshman year. I got asked to write something today. I was a little nervous about it. I didn't even know if I was gonna come up and talk. Here I am. It's kind of funny how things work out in life. If someone would've told me three years ago, I'd be standing here tonight and talking to you guys, the person I am, I wouldn't have believed them. Before NGRC, I didn't have anything going for me. I was getting kicked out of school. I was hanging out with the wrong people. It's my junior year now, and I have straight A's. I have amazing friends, and, I mean, I couldn't have done any of this without NGRC. Gunnery Sergeant is my main support system for all the things I've accomplished. I mean, he's not your everyday teacher. He doesn't show up at 8 o'clock in the morning and then turn off teacher at 3:00. He's there for you on the weekends. He does parades with us. He's always there. Last year, I had to undergo a surgery, a surgery to remove a mass in my stomach. Not only did he write, have everybody write me a "get well" letter, he called before the surgery and after just to make sure I was okay, and it really meant a lot to me. It really does show his dedication to the unit. It shows his dedication to every student in his class and how much he cares about them. Our RTC is a family. We all care about each other, and we're all there for each other. This program helps so many people. So many people would be lost without it. I mean, first of all, the cadets that don't have a good support system at home, people that don't, aren't there to support them with what they want to fulfill later in life. We're here for that. I mean, the community, the community would be losing a lot, a lot. Toys for Tots, we donated, I think, 8,000 toys. There was so many kids that actually got to have a Christmas and presents because of all the hard work and effort we put in. And the schools would lose out. They would lose out on an amazing program that teaches, I mean, so many things. It teaches you commitment in yourself, to commitment to your family and your friends, and just how to be a better overall person. I wasn't quite sure what I was gonna say when I came up. I wrote down some, few words. I'm really hoping I'm getting the point through to you guys that we're not just another program. We mean a lot to everybody, and I hope you all understand that. It's changed so many people's lives. Me personally, now, in my junior year, I'm, next fall, I'm starting my college classes early. Gunnery Sergeant has helped so much with everything. If you have bad grades, he will help you. He doesn't just, you know, give you F's. He's like, what can I do to help you? It'll just better the whole school. It makes everyone a better person just to be in that environment. Thank you.
Michael Ford.
Good evening. I'm Mike Ford. My daughter is Hannah. She's in the JRC program. We hear a lot about what the program's done for the kids. I've seen it. My daughter lacked direction, didn't know what she wanted to do with her life. She was a scared, timid child when she came to Eureka High. She's outgoing, she gets good grades. The whole program, these kids are what we need. But aside from the kids, 47, 47's the number of programs outside of the school that they donate their time to. 1,755 is the amount of hours of community service this program has given to our community since the beginning of the school year, this year alone. You heard Ashlyn say 8,000 toys. 4,500 kids, 1,000 families, they save Christmas for. They don't have the numbers to be sponsored by the Navy any longer. Can you beat $2 an hour for community service? I can't. I don't see it happening. With the way things are, we're at a point where we're losing good thing after good thing after good thing, and I know you'd stop it if you could. It's not our fault, it's not your fault. It's the way our society is going. What we need is more good in our schools. Every day, I entrust you people with the most valuable thing in my life. My kids. I don't think that one salary could be more justified than somebody who does so much, not for our kids, your kids, but for our entire community. Eureka, Humboldt County, California, we need help all the way across the board. Cutting a program of good kids is not the answer to our long-term problems. I know there's money problems. I run a business downtown on Fifth Street, have for a number of years. Every day, I see the kids coming from Old Town and that neighborhood. Some of them walking to school, some of them not headed towards school. I always noticed one, because he walks right by my office window every morning on his way to school. It used to be 9:00, 9:30, when I'd see this young man go by, and I always thought, why, isn't that kid in school? That young man decided that he needed a change. I'd never talked to him, and I've never met him until tonight. He decided he'd give the program one month. That young man has a future. He's squared away. He's clean. He's not letting his community, the neighborhood that he's come from, dragging him down any longer. It's people like Gunnery Smith that help our children to become the people that we need in our future, here, at home. And it's our responsibility to make sure that these kids have these opportunities. My daughter's headed for college, hopefully on a Navy scholarship. Without that program, her chances of that scholarship are lessened, but yet she's not gonna give up. These are the kind of young people we need, all the way across the board. I've seen them change. Unfortunately for my wife and I, we live very close to the school. Our house is a stopping point after school. But the good part is, I've got to see these kids change from little kids that were goof-offs to kids that are on your honor roll. Please, do everything you can. This is important. It's not just for our kids, it's for all of us. Thank you.
And Hannah Ford.
Hey, you'll have to excuse my tears. Reintroduce myself. I spoke to you guys the last time there was a board meeting. I'm Hannah Ford. I'm the Public Affairs Officer for the Eureka NGRC. The last time I spoke, I talked to you guys about how NGRC changed my life. You just heard my dad talk a little bit about that, and without the program, I wouldn't have realized what I wanted to do with my life. I wouldn't have had any direction at all. I understand that Eureka City Schools has virtually no extra money to be spending right now, but the NGRC is a program that we need. It's not just for the students in it, but it's for the community. Just like you heard my dad say since last school year, we've put in over 1,000 hours of service to the community. This past summer, I went to a Leadership Academy at a naval base, Wouldby Island in Washington. There were several students there from my high school in Las Vegas, Centennial High School. In my platoon alone, there was at least 10 from that school. One night in the tents, they were all talking about the next year in their programs, and I overheard one of the girls from Centennial say that they had over 100 incoming freshmen into their program. Then later on, I got to talking to her, and I told her about all of the community service that we do, and she went, wow, how many kids do you have? And I said, about 70, and her jaw dropped. She couldn't believe how much that we do with how many little kids that we have. She said that even with the hundreds and hundreds- She said that even with the hundreds and hundreds of kids that they have in their program, they didn't do nearly as much for their community. The Navy hasn't cut our funds because we're not a hard-working program, because we're not a good unit. They cut it because they had to, because we didn't meet the requirement of a hundred cadets. Right now, we have sixty-eight in the program. So they've offered us the NNDCC so that we can keep doing what we're doing, and we can keep helping the community because they understand that we are a hard-working program and that we are a good unit. That we will do what it takes to keep helping the community. I know from the last time that I spoke, I heard many of you say that you support us. And I would like you to just keep in mind, when you're making budget cuts and everything, just keep in mind how much we do for the community and all the people that would lose out if we didn't have this program anymore. Thank you.
That's the end of the green sheets that I have, but if there's somebody else that wishes to speak, okay, come forward.
My name's Trevor Carlin. I didn't prepare anything tonight because I've had a track practice and football workouts. So I'm just gonna wing this a little bit. Um, I've been in this program three years now, and it's done so much for me. Gunnery Sergeant Smith is just my mentor and just like my idol. And I do so much to, like, make him proud and everything. And like, this whole unit really is a family. It just means so much to me. And I know it means so much to everybody else. And I just have one thing to ask, just please don't cut ROTC, please. Thank you.
Come on forward to the podium.
Hi, I'm Trevor's mom. He just spoke a moment ago. I got a call this afternoon, Mom, can you come talk? Got here a few months late, as you can see. His brother and sister are out here tonight. Two things I want to say. One, Trevor would not go to school at Eureka High if it wasn't for this program. We lived in Eureka. We had moved. I was checking into Arcata High School. They recommended Eureka High School. We currently reside in McKinleyville. We spend a lot of gas money getting him to school here. It's because of the NJROTC program. It matters. He would not attend here. I don't know how many other parents feel the same way, but we're spending a lot of gas money to get him here every day. Now, he's doing great. You've heard a lot of people talk. The program matters. It saves a lot of kids. It gives them direction. It matters. Five kids. Trevor and the last two little ones. I watch these kids after hours, the way they, you know, network with each other, the way they're respectable people with good values, what good community members they are. And, um, they're nice, clean-cut kids. Gunnery Sergeant Smith has done a fabulous job. I have tremendous respect. And Trevor's in with a good crowd, learning good values. Our oldest son Robbie, what a sweetheart. But Robbie made some bad choices in life, hung out with some bad people in life, and through some bad decisions in a cold night, Robbie's dead now. I think NJROTC matters. Robbie didn't have an opportunity to be in a program like that. Wish he had. But you know what? I'm glad Trevor's in it. I'm glad these kids that maybe didn't have their lives pulled together, had a chance. But you know, I got four of my five kids left. It matters. It matters for your enrollment. It matters for our families and the community. Thank you, Gunnery Sergeant.
Come on forward.
Good evening, sir. I'm a little underdressed. I just came from the hospital. I'm an intern over there. I, I am a member of the Eureka High School NJROTC. I am a flight surgeon. My job is to provide medical support. I am certified in, in that type of field. The reason I came up here is because without this program, I would have never found my way into finding a career. Ladies and gentlemen, I am a Pacific Islander. I came from the beautiful, uh, wonderful island of Palau. Fresh from here, I attended here in Eureka High School. I, I knew high school was four years, and I had the whole four years to find what I, what I wanted to do. And in the second semester, I joined a wonderful program. And I, I had, I had a dream of going into the, into the medical field. Don't know what, what to do in there, but I had, I, I wanted, I wanted to be some kind of a doctor. With the help of NJROTC, I have a nomination to the United States Naval Academy. I, I, I was recommended by Gunnery Sergeant himself to, uh, for a naval ROTC scholarship. And I, and I am on my path and on my way to becoming a neurosurgeon, a neurosurgeon. It, it is without NJROTC that I have found my way and I have found my spot today. I grew up with great values and, um, great and strong values and high standards. But without NJROTC, I would, I've not been able to exercise those every single day of my life. I come to the high school, and we learn about things that not even an average student in, in an average high school learns about. We learn how to stand in attention. Okay, I'm gonna show you. Standing in attention with a forty-five degree angle like this, the heels together, and our, our thumbs on the seams of our pants, and we stand like this. And we learn, it's self-discipline to stand like that for hours. We, we could do it for hours. If there's a challenge, do it for as long as you can. We can do it. It's a summer program. Every, every, every single summer, Gunnery Sergeant is a liaison for youth, uh, youth program for America called Devil Pups. It's a ten-day program with United States Marines. What we do, we go and spend ten days with them, learn how to be a good citizen, learn to be, how to, how to be a great American, and learn how to have self-motivation, self-discipline, and be able to, um, cope stress and, and cope hard times. Like, like I said, standing in attention for hours, we've done it. I, I've done it in Devil Pups. I have had my experience in Devil Pups, standing for hours. You know, in, in attention for hours. I've seen people pass out because they've taken the chance for self-discipline. They've taken the chance for self-motivation, to stand there and sweat in, in like a hundred and ten degrees outside. And they still do it because of motivation and knowing that they can do it, knowing, and knowing that, that the end is not near, and that they can still fight for it. And that's what Gunnery Sergeant Smith and this program offers to every, every youth here in America. I challenge you to not cut this program. If you want good leaders to be, you set an example as leaders in this community. We follow your footsteps. Without you, we cannot be who we are today. One day, some of us will sit in those exact same seats, and then we will talk about how we can better our community for our children and for their future. Thank you very much.
So now we have a quorum again.
You okay, Fran?
I guess we can move on to our regular program.
We have one more.
Okay, so we'll take one more speaker.
Okay. Okay, so my name is Sandy Hing, and I know you guys are in a busy schedule, and thank you for the opportunity. So, um, I just wanna start off with saying, like, um, NJROTC has, um, changed me. I know you guys have been hearing that probably all night. And, but, um, I just wanna say that whenever I entered, whenever I came here in my freshman year during my second semester, um, I was new, and I didn't really know what to expect from this school. And, um, I was very scared and nervous moving as a new student to a new high school, to a new area, to a new state, not knowing anybody, not having any friends. But as soon as I entered NJROTC, it just felt like family because everybody was so nice and everybody was just very welcoming. And you don't feel that often in any of your other classrooms except for NJROTC. Outside of NJROTC, we, we establish and do so many things for the community, such as Toys for Tots. We spend so much hours giving back to our country, giving back to our country and our schools, what they, what you guys give to us. And I know we, I know you guys may not give thank yous as much, but what we give to you, we hope that that is an appreciation of what you guys give to us. And, um, if we, if I did not join this class, um, I would probably not volunteer for as much community service as I do, um, because NJROTC has offered so much community service. And I, now, just like any volunteer activity I see, I just wanna do it because of the opportunities NJROTC has helped me. NJROTC made me realize that I can do so much more with my life because it just makes me realizes that there's so much more out there for me than just being another regular student in the class and having just maybe going to college and things like that. Every day, I talk to my friend, my friends and peers in NJROTC about college and my goals I want to achieve in life. But other classes, I just talk to my friends about what they did over the weekends. And because they probably don't have any goals, and we don't have the same, we don't share the same common interest as me and my peers in NJROTC. So I just wanna say that before you guys make cuts to this program, just can you please think about what really matters to the student in NJROTC and what they have done? Thank you.
Okay, so we'll back up a little bit on the agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
There are none.
And information reports, student representatives. Superintendent's report.
I have some brief reports. I'll try to make them brief, given that we're trying to move this along. Just wanted to acknowledge that we have students from Eureka High that'll be recognized at our rising stars, as rising stars in our community. And the students from Eureka High being recognized are Connor Alston, Kate Browning, Lillian Bushman. Did I say that right? Sierra Cop and Austin Schmaltz. I also want to let you know tomorrow is spaghetti dinner for Safe and Sober, uh, starting at five-thirty at the Eureka High School cafeteria. Just to also let people know that we do have our SARC's posted on our website. I think we got them posted yesterday, and they are the SARC's from last year. So information about all of our schools is now, is now updated and available. Just a brief comment about the earthquake that we had. What I can say, it gave every school an opportunity to have a, um, practice, yet not quite a practice. And I do know that most schools went ahead and took advantage to have their regular earthquake drill. And students even at Eureka High School, I, I know some of them evacuated and some of them ducked under their desks. So, you know, while none of us, I think, like going through an earthquake, it's one of those kind of good news scenarios where we can actually do a practice that feels pretty real without having any of the bad stuff go with it. So that's my report.
Board members' reports. Wendy?
I have nothing to report.
I assume that the Zane newsletters mailed home to parents? Because I, I did get one. And I just want to say that newsletter is excellent. And I hope that all the parents read it because it really does tell you what's going on there. It's very, very well done. And I had a wonderful experience on Tuesday in physical therapy because the six members of limited edition came to sing a Valentine song to one of the employees. And there were like fifteen people there, so all of us got to, to hear "I Can't Help Falling in Love With You." And they were wonderful. I cried through the entire thing. He even turned, I was on the, whatever this is, the cycle. He turned it off, but made me make up my time. And, uh, it's not my favorite thing to do anyway. It was, it was excellent, and I wish they'd make, I wish they'd make a nice tape. Or not a tape anymore. What am, I'm really dating myself. A video, well, even a video or a CD. Because, and you know, every year, when the seniors leave, you think they aren't gonna be as good as they were last year. And every year, they are as good as they were the last year. So that was a wonderful experience, and I really felt like probably the only good Valentine I'll ever get of that time in my life, and so it was really neat.
Okay, moving down to item J, consent calendar.
I'd like to pull item J thirteen for discussion action.
And can I pull, can I, do I have to pull, um, on the consent calendar?
I just did.
J ele, oh.
Thirteen.
Oh, I thought you said nineteen. I'm sorry.
So thirteen.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion for the remainder?
I so move.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item J thirteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Then opposed, motion carries. J thirteen, Schedule Budget Workshop on February twenty-eighth.
My understanding is that we'd like to change the time. It states from February twenty-eighth at six P.M.
To?
To five P.M. It's already six P.M. Oh, I'm sorry. You were looking at me.
Were we talking about adding that workshop at the beginning of that, making this a four P.M. start?
Well, now we have a quorum, so we can take care of some business tonight, so.
Oh, okay. But I, I thought that that was only for the one, for, just for the budget workshop. It would be just a one-item thing, because if we have a quorum and can take care of the business, we won't need to do that. Is that correct?
Yeah, so five P.M. should.
So five P.M. would, would be good. I would really appreciate moving it up an hour.
I need a motion.
I so move.
You're moving that we're gonna schedule a budget workshop for February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve at five P.M.?
Correct.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then opposed, motion carries. Discussion, action. Item K fifteen, Student Expulsion.
I think after reading the documents that I would make a motion to, what's the word I'm looking for?
It's J. Is it sixteen?
K fifteen. To expel student number eleven dash twelve dash zero zero eight, resolution number eleven dash twelve dash zero two two.
I second it.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then opposed, motion carries. K sixteen, Vote to Write-In. Aye. Then opposed, motion carries. K-16, vote to write in for CSBA. Is there anyone we wish to nominate? We did find out that they do have to be current board members that need nominated.
I knew that.
So we could write in the names of missing board members? That'll teach 'em.
No. I think we're, everybody here is so busy right now that, that it's quite a few.
I have no nominees to write in.
Okay, so we'll pass on that. And that did point out to me that I did skip the report out from closed session.
Oh, my goodness.
So.
I am sorry.
Wendy?
All right. Closed session, item C1 is on the discussion action. Um, item C2, no action to report. Item C3, no action to report. And item C4, no action to report.
Okay, now we're back in the proper order. Item K-17, fiscal stability plan development.
As part of our ongoing process and the need to, um, have a fiscal stability plan be approved and adopted by the board as part of our second interim report that we need to make to the County Office of Education, um, this is an ongoing discussion that we, we have, uh, started over the last couple of board meetings and would continue to have that conversation today. Um, I think it is important to, um, note to the board that we do have some timelines that, you know, we are needing to try to follow. And, uh, certainly any kind of direction that the board can give the staff to help facilitate the moving forward with the stability plan as well as with second interim would be appreciated. But we can talk more about that as we move through the, um, agenda tonight. What we have done, the board gave, um, asked for some additional information from staff of which we have put together and have updated the charts in front of you. And do we have extra charts to hand out? Okay.
I got one.
Oh. I'm sorry, I had, I was sitting on it. Okay, I wasn't exactly sitting on it. Here's another extra one, too.
Thank you.
And certainly, um, I think recognizing that, uh, the current fiscal situation in the state of California certainly isn't making the board's job or staff's job any easier. And, and I think that everything that we've heard tonight recognizes the fact that, that there are some tough times ahead of us. And certainly, um, any of the kinds of reductions and/or eliminations that, um, the board will ultimately take action on are, um, always very difficult and certainly very painful. I think, um, one of the things the board has consistently done is really look at what are the, the vision that we've put forth for the board and, and what are our, our mission for, um, our district. So, since we don't have it anymore, um, like we used to, I went ahead and, and have it over there on the wall for the public that may not be as familiar with what our vision is, um, for the district to be able to reference that. Certainly, um, as we know, these are very, very difficult times and, and certainly difficult decisions. You know, Eureka City Schools has a couple of issues that they need to address, including our, our structural deficit of spending more than we are bringing in, uh, including declining enrollment. Um, we've had some good news about transportation, which is encouraging. Um, so initially we thought we were going to have to address, um, you know, having zero transportation for this year, but that, that situation has improved. Um, we also have to at least consider, uh, potential impact of, um, should the initiatives fail, of the governor indicating that schools could have mid-year cuts next year of, uh, up to $370.88, you know, per pupil, um, which certainly for this district is, is a significant impact. This doesn't mean that it's necessarily an, an all-inclusive list, certainly if, um, there are other ideas that come up in other ways that we could look at reducing costs. Um, we are obviously open to all of those suggestions and will certainly take them seriously because, um, none of them are easy and every one of them is tough. Um, kind of wanted to lay some of the foundation that, that we, we've been struggling with as a district and certainly the board has been really doing a due diligent job of, of trying to, um, seriously look at everything and anything that we can do to, um, help the district out with having the, the least impact as possible. So I thought, you know, it seems like what we did last year, or last year, last board meeting, is went through each item. If that's the board's preference, we can quickly do that. The board had some other questions. We've also got some information for, for you about as well. So, is that what the board would like us to do, is, is to kind of show the differences?
Sure.
Okay. So, um, maybe you could just reference which numbers. Some of the things haven't changed between last meeting and this, but some things have and we can at least indicate to you, um, what the changes are and why.
Okay, so I'll just, uh, jump in with the, uh, the charts that you have in front of you and as well as what's on the screen. I'll apologize. Uh, it doesn't quite translate as well up on the screen as it does on paper. Um, but in any case, we've added another column to the far right that updates, um, where appropriate information that we had presented previously. Um, so with that being said, I'll just jump in on the, the first item, which is child development. And, um, in this particular item, what we are hoping to do is reduce the encroachment by reducing costs and increasing fees. Uh, at our previous meeting, we were looking at a net encroachment of roughly $61,000. Um, working with, uh, with Debbie Brock with Springer on this, we've been able to come up with a plan that would reduce that encroachment down to about, uh, just approximately $15,000. Combination of reducing expenditures, um, in part through a retirement and reconfiguring some of the staffing, um, uh, putting pencil to paper and seeing how we could decrease the materials and supplies budget, another area that we were able to find some fairly significant reductions. And then also, uh, a small increase in terms of a proposed, um, increase in, in the fees that are charged on a full fee basis. Uh, brought us again from the $61,000 approximate encroachment down to about a $15,000 encroachment.
So, and I'd like to, on number two, it, we don't really have, um, a change in the monetary amount, but the board had asked for some additional information regarding our CalSafe program. And so what I can say, um, in terms of current enrollment for the school year is as follows. For Eureka High School, uh, the CalSafe program has served five young parents. For Zo, seven. So far, zero from adult ed. Um, so far, everyone is on track to graduate on time. Some Zo students have and will graduate a little early. In fact, they've already had four graduates from Zo this year.
I'm sorry, total number of students?
Well, I'm getting to that because it kind of fluctuates. Currently, the total number of babies is eight. Out of those, um, there are equal number of community and teen parent. So it's four and four.
When we first started this program, was it not, at least partially, if not fully grant funded?
It is still grant funded, but it's not fully grant funded. It, there is an encroachment into the general fund above, um, the program costs more than what we receive. In addition, um, it was put into that tier that has the flexibility where you can sweep all of the funds if you choose not to operate the program.
So this, the $72,707 is the amount that it costs to run the program or the amount of the encroachment above and beyond what we're paid to run the program?
Well, and it's, it's the amount that if the program were to close, we would benefit in terms of general fund relief because, and I'll say approximate numbers is, if the grant portion for that program is $56,000, the rest would be encroachment. Be, because that 56 is flexible, it could all come back into general funds.
So first.
For just one, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just one year?
Well.
Like if you stop running the program, you can sweep those funds?
Yes.
And then what happens in the next year? They still give you money for a program you're not running? I'm not following this very well.
No?
So, these are part of the, the flexed funds. And so, yes, every year we do receive kind of that aggregate block grant, um, of dollars that can be used, in essence, for any purpose that we choose. So those, those are the flex funds. Um, the, the net, um, cost of the program, we, we bring about 7,000 fees back in, but the net cost of the program, netted is about $72,000. So, again, if the program were not in place right now, that $72,000 would come back and could be used in the general fund in, in any manner that we choose, not just this year, but, um, going forward.
And it's not considered one-time money because you will continue to receive those grants for?
Till the flexibility goes away.
Which isn't in our three-year budget.
1415.
1415, right?
At the end of 1415 is when flexibility goes away. But with the caveat that with the governor's proposed budget, there is the weighted pupil formula. And, um, the dollars that came through for, uh, CalSafe in the past would be part of that weighted formula as well going forward. So, it's a long way of saying that we may see a difference in the way that these funds are, uh, that the revenue for, for this particular portion is figured as we go forward.
So, I'm a little bit confused about the numbers. You started off by saying there were five EHS parents and, um, seven from Zo. And then you followed that up by saying there were four babies of our present students and four community, so.
Right. Because they had four graduates, so that means the students left. So that's what they started off with, but since then, four of the students have graduated and left.
So that would be current enrollment, that'd be.
Current enrollment right now is four high school kids, four community kids. Previous to that, they have more, but they've had graduates.
Okay.
How does the cost get to be so high on such a small program if we're only talking four to eight babies or?
Well, part of it's staffing. It's a one to two staff, staffing ratio. So for every two babies, you have to have an adult. And so it's primarily the, the cost of the salary for those people.
Is that a school, state school rule or something? Because for normal childcare, it's six to one?
It's a licensing issue. And these are infants, not, not three that, yeah, these are baby babies. So NJRTC had a change.
Right. So, uh, skipping to number four, um, we're still, number three, again, the key issue there was the, reducing the pressure on facilities. Um, for number four, we had originally talked about a, an FTE reduction. Um, as we went back and looked at the entire program, at this point, the cost of running the program is the roughly $78,000 that you see there. So to eliminate the program would free up those funds in the general fund and, um, that would be the impact.
Would free up 78 instead of 43?
That's correct.
So what about the, um, HROP offered to fund the instructor through that program?
What that, what HROP has indicated is that we have a certain number of sections, 23 sections. And out of that, we have some discretion on what we want those sections to be used for. And so they've indicated if we want to, um, have two of the sections go away and take those two sections and apply them to NJRTC, they would support that. Um, I do know that, that Rick and I have meeting tomorrow to, to look at the sections of, um, that we have under ROP right now and try to determine which sections would we propose being eliminated so that, um, that support potentially could go to this program or to, you know, another program.
And what, if, if we did that, if we supplanted with two other, uh, how much money would that, would we, would it go back to the 43 or less?
Um, I, I think with the, the two.
If HROP picked up two.
So it would be two.
The two period, it'd be point four.
It would be point four that we would bring back, so, um.
Not quite half of that.
Yeah. So it would be roughly $50,000.
That we would save or that it would cost?
That it would cost.
Okay.
So what is the other?
Yeah.
The one FTE is $43,000. How do you get to that $78,000 number? What, what all, not details, but.
Change.
So that, that FTE really should have been about a point six previously, not the full point one. So that's where that is. And as we looked at the entire program with the benefits attached to it, and pretty much the program is salary and benefit at this point.
Okay.
All in at 78.
You're talking manpower, not materials, supplies, uniform. That, this number is a first, uh, yeah, salary and benefits, okay.
Would be 78.5 or 78 approximately.
Correct.
Unless we switched with, and took over two of the other ROPs, which would cut it back to about $50,000.
Number five, uh, Eureka Adult School, no change in the number that was presented previously. Um, I think one of the questions that the board had was to talk about the specific programs, um, those that are break even and, and those that don't.
And I, I do have quite a bit of information on that. We really haven't had an opportunity to review it too much, um, in terms of having Paul, you know, go through the numbers and make sure that they, they balance out to what we calculate as well. Um, did you make copies, Dr. Lance? Okay. So there is, um, oh, you are here. I thought you were, sorry. I am so glad because you could certainly speak to it better than I could. Um, so if you'd like Sandy to come up, she could go through and if you could hand those out. Again, I'll still reference, we haven't had time to check her math, but.
You're just the one to check it too, aren't you?
No.
No, I know.
So, and yes, I would welcome someone checking our math. Absolutely. Um.
Are there geometry students?
So. Oh, no. I have, actually I brought colored ones. I have three colors. And I think it would be helpful for you guys to have the colored copies. Um, so.
Oh, thank, thank you.
Okay.
I agree. Now wait a minute.
Right. Pass one. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Here, you got the letter.
I got a letter.
Sorry.
Did Wendy get one? Did everyone get one, Wendy?
I have this one.
Yeah, but you didn't get that on the color.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, so.
The color one's at the last page.
Not exactly sure what you would like here, whether you want to go through these one at a time, you want a minute to look at it. What do you want from me?
Just a quick overview.
Okay. So if we were to go through, um, program by program, we have, what we have is, um, and what I gave you includes, um, my recommendations. The, the color copies that you have have my recommendations on each page. I think the, um, black and white copy is a previous version that, um, does not, does not include my little ideas. Um, Rich asked me a while back, what would adult ed look like, um, with zero encroachment on general fund? And, um, this is how I see it being possible. Um, it's going to be painful, but, um, we can do it. So basically, we have, uh, multiple programs. We've got, um, ACLC, which is our GED High School Diploma Program. Um, this program unfortunately is the first page and it is very heavily weighted into the general fund. Um, my, uh, do, do you want to hear? What, what is it that you want to hear?
I think we're starting at the back.
Just a couple of overview of each area.
Okay.
And we'll look at the details later.
So, the adult.
And I think you have it set up very nicely, each individual program, a little breakdown and your recommendation. So if you want to zip through from the start to the finish, it's only going to take. take you a minute, and we can read along with you, but...
Yeah.
All right, so we start with the Academic Learning Center, which is our GED High School Diploma Program. It's very heavily weighted by the general fund. This is an expensive program to us. We do have some Workforce Investment Act money. It's a very small slice of this whole piece of pie. If you go to the next page, we have Computer Business Training, which pretty much zeroes out between our, between our CalWorks grant and student fees. It's designed to pretty much pay for itself, so that there's no encroachment on the general fund there. If you go to the next page, we have Certified Nursing Assistant, which is a significant run in the back, in the black program. There is zero general fund, zero student fees. We're supported by a local company that really sees the need for CNAs in our community, and they pretty much make it possible for us to do this without any general fund dollars. You go on into ESL, English as a Second Language, and EL Civics. This program has some general fund money in it, but it's got a pretty significant chunk of Workforce Investment Act money. And so, that program could be cut and become general fund neutral, revenue neutral, I guess is the right word. If you move into Project Learn, which is our jail program, it actually is revenue positive because the sheriff's department kicks in. We've recently changed the...
A second, I'm lost.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mind your backwards.
Project Learn, okay, that's the jail. Okay, there we go.
I have, I gave you guys all my copies. I'm looking at Rich's copy, so it might be a little different. I'm sorry. Okay, so Project Learn runs in the black and has the potential of being even blacker because we've recently moved to a distance learning format that could potentially spike our ADA. Project Learn, as all corrections education, is outside of flexibility, at least at this point, and so ADA matters there. And we're expecting with the introduction of distance learning, our ADA to spike significantly. Job Market, 100% general fund. It has some benefits in that it keeps us at the table. There are a lot of grants that we've been able to participate in because of our, because of the fact that we just sit at that table, and we're considered operators at that, at the one stop, and we have a vote in what goes on there, and we've been able to participate in several grants because of that connection. I do see other avenues for keeping our foot in the door there, and that would be to continue our CalWorks grant and provide services at the job market using the CalWorks grant, but it would not be in the same format. We're looking at a workforce skills certification that the county is really excited about right now and would like to, and is planning to at this point, take over the payment for the instructional hours once we get that thing piloted and going, and it's starting in a couple of weeks. So, it's kind of a cool, exciting thing going on. Older adult, these are June Davis's class. These are completely revenue neutral. In fact, they run a little bit in the black. It kind of varies a little bit depending on how many students we have per class, but it's pretty revenue neutral. There is a little bit of impact on our office with taking registrations and things like that, but the student fees cover the cost of the instructor. Pharmacy tech, also revenue neutral. Again, there are some, there is some impact to our classified staff here in getting students registered. The reason this program can be revenue neutral is because we work through an organization called Boston Reed College, and basically, they pay us per graduate or per completer. And the reason it's a benefit, even though the amount of money is really small, is we get to count these numbers of students, which is, it's small, towards our Carl Perkins numbers, and my goal is to get our Carl Perkins back to adult education. And in order to do that, we need to serve at least an additional 200 students in career technical education per year. We're going to be working on that with this program as well as with the Workforce Skills Certification Program, which is paid for with the CalWorks money. Which brings us to the next page. Workforce Skills Certification, completely revenue neutral. Actually, there's a little chunk of money left over that we use towards our Computer Business Training, which was one of the first few pages. Workforce Skills Certification, right now, completely paid for with CalWorks money. We're hoping next year that this will be paid for by the county and that we can take this workforce skills, or the CalWorks, excuse me, the CalWorks grant money and apply it to other career tech ed programs. Next page is Concurrent High School Students. We have, this is, of course, 100% general fund funded. There are no Adult Ed dollars to pay for this. So, that's going to be completely up to you, how much or to what extent you want to continue to support that. All right?
Can I ask a question about this?
Yes.
You have your total cost at $22,123, and then you have coming out, and you say it's totally funded by the general fund, but what you have coming out of the general fund is $17,650?
You're looking at something that I'm not looking at.
You're looking at the workforce skills.
Concurrent Students Credit Recovery page.
Oh.
Concurrent.
Well, I can't speak to that because I have a different page, and my page balances.
Right there. Balance is up at the top. Costs $22,000 to run the program.
Right.
But only $17,000 of it comes out of the general fund, but it's...
That's not correct. It's 100% of it comes out of the...
General fund.
General fund, I'm sorry.
Isn't this the one we just...
You cheated.
See, we do need to check your numbers.
Accidentally picked up this number instead of that number.
Oh, okay.
Isn't this the one...
Thank goodness we have another numbers guy here at the table.
Okay, so the impact of the general fund is not 17,650, it's 22,123.
Yeah, it's the full amount. It's 22,123.
If you use these numbers up here...
I was just wondering why it was...
Okay. Isn't this the one we just voted to accept that we rewrote their contract for the concurrent? Because before this, we weren't allowed to have the concurrent.
No, this was, what we just voted on recently was, had nothing to do with budget. It was about allowing adult independent studies to participate in this program.
But that doesn't cost anything if we allow them to do that.
No, it's included in this cost right here.
That's what I wanted to know. But that cost still comes out of the general fund?
Yep.
Right? Okay.
Yep. Okay, this is the painful one. This is my position, where I'm recommending that you cut because you can't afford it. No need to, I think there are ways that this program can be managed, and we can talk about that at another time, but... So, moving on, the secretary position. If we're going to have an adult education, we have to have a secretary and we have to have a fiscal analyst. And I really feel strongly that we need to maintain them at their current level of hours. The impact of adult education reporting is very painful. We don't have the same kind of district support because we have to turn in different reports to the states, and if we're, to the state, excuse me, and if we're going to maintain the grants that we currently have, I just, I don't know how we could do it without our classified staff. So, and the same comment on the account analyst. Looking at additional costs, this one's a little confusing, but it's basically our health and welfare, and these numbers reflect this year's budget. Obviously, they would look quite different next year if we make some changes, but all of these numbers reflect this year's budget, and so the additional costs page would change significantly next year.
So, just adding up real quick, your suggested cuts come up to, with $131,000, which is pretty significant.
Which is pretty, yeah.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. It's going to be painful changes, but, you know, these are painful times, so...
Just $131,000 with the director's salary of $88,000? You're so good at math, it scares me.
Sande, have a question?
Yes.
You pointed out the cost of the secretary and the account analyst on the pages toward the back. Are they shown on the very front page as well, or is the front page some kind of a summary, Adult Learning Center?
No, they're not. Are you talking about this?
No.
What front page are you talking about?
The first graph. Adult Learning Center.
Oh, no, no, no. AC, when we say Adult Learning Center, we're talking about just the program that serves the high school diploma. So, we're just talking about the teacher, the instructional assistant, and the materials involved in GED High School Diploma, Adult Basic Education.
Another option that I will say that Sande and I have talked about that certainly isn't any less painful necessarily is that similar to what we did a couple of years ago, we could suspend Adult Ed without, you know, we've talked about doing that. We did that three years ago, two years ago, where we didn't operate Adult Ed for a couple of months until we had an idea of whether or not, for example, in this case, the initiatives are passed or not. So, that is another consideration for the board is to not officially necessarily close down, but suspend it so that that money becomes available, worst-case scenario, that the initiatives don't pass and the triggers are pulled, or that the $378 in ADA per student, or per student costs.
Which I'm not sure why we would do that. If you're talking about shutting down even the areas where there's zero hit on the general fund.
Well, and certainly, that would be the board decision. I think sometimes it's a little harder to figure out if there's some additional soft costs, which I would call it, in terms of utilities and having classrooms open and custodial support, cleaning them and those kinds of things, but that's harder to quantify.
Okay, so, we have a number of other areas.
Yeah.
So, one last thing to leave you with is if we do close adult education officially, the Workforce Investment Act dollars will no longer be available to us, and that is available both at the jail and on our regular home ownership site. And so, that adds up to about $55,000. It's not, it's not tons of money, but once you close, you can't, you can't reach that again. Now, that's not the case if we were to suspend for a while, so...
I wouldn't be in favor of shutting down for a while. The disruption is just more than it's worth. Number six.
Again, this revisits the issue of reducing the district support of the secondary sports programs. We've added a little bit more information in the notes section, breaking out the number of teams and the number of participants, and also showing the booster club donations, which was roughly $25,000 last year. It looks like I have my ears off, and is about $23,000 year to date this year. Overall, the, between both Zane's and Eureka High's programs, that number hasn't changed, roughly $131,000 impact on general fund.
Those numbers did change on the sheet. It's $108,000?
It's 108, plus 23 is 131, yeah.
So, after you cover each of these areas, then I'd like to make some comments on some of them.
I would too.
So, let's...
Okay, move along.
Transportation, a little bit, a couple of things that have happened here. You may have seen that, first of all, we got our transportation funding back for this year, so the $183,000 that we weren't expecting to get, we will get this year. And on top of that, an even larger surprise is the fact that we will get our full $375,000 transportation appropriation in 2012, 13. Both those will be offset by revenue limit reductions. So, we'll actually gain about $30,000 this year in the exchange, getting our transportation revenue back with a lesser hit on the revenue limit side, and about $60,000 next year. So, those two things together are some slight positives for us. What we've attempted to do here is show that the total encroachment right now is about $235,000, total expense of transportation, $611,000. If we were to try to bring our encroachment down to the point where we hit 95% of the original appropriation so that we didn't have to re-benchmark our transportation revenue numbers, that would be roughly $444,000 based on our total expense right now. Less that appropriation level means that if we could get to that point, we would reduce our encroachment by $167,000. Food services, not much more to report here. We still look at the adjusted net hit to the general fund or the encroachment of $257,000. I'll just point out that historically, Eureka City Schools, I think in the best of times, the encroachment for food services has been about $100,000. So, if we were to look at this, or as we're looking at this program, that would be the target that we would be shooting for. I don't know that it's possible to bring it to a break even point, but potentially to bring it down to the $100,000 encroachment as opposed to the $257 that we're running right now.
Is there a net encroachment for the breakfast program?
We're still pulling those numbers apart, John, so I can't give them to you on a program by program or meal basis yet.
So, I would like to get that information by the 28th.
Okay, sure.
I would too.
Let's see, number nine, again, the $50,000, I've broken it out a little bit differently. Utilities, $40,000, and telephone, $10,000. We do meet with the folks from Energy Education next week. They're a group out of Texas that works with districts across the United States and really puts together practical programs as ways to reduce utilities, and a lot of that is, I'll call it, basic blocking and tackling, making sure your lights are turned out, some of the smaller appliances that are energy eaters, making sure that those are not being overutilized, things like turning off computers at night. Glance at Marcel when I say that. I'm not sure if he would agree with that one or not, but basically, they do come in and kind of do an overall audit and then put together a program for you. It may sound a little bit pie in the sky, but Del Norte, both the school and the county office there went together, and they've realized a safety... county office there went together, and they've realized a savings of about a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars over an eight-month period with these folks coming in and doing some work up there. Whether they can do anything similar for us or not, don't know, but we're certainly interested and excited about talking to them next week and seeing if they can work some additional wonders for us here. Number ten, we actually looked at this and, and said, this may be an area that we can reduce even more than we had originally brought to the board. We looked at a ten percent reduction originally, are continuing to look at that with a potential twenty-five percent reduction, both unrestricted and restricted. That would amount to about a thirty-one thousand dollar comeback to the, to the general fund compared to what those expenses are costing us right now. Textbook purchases remains at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I know there's some question as to whether we can sustain at, at roughly a forty-five thousand dollar level of expenditure. That would be for basically replacement in, in some of the consumables. We've had a, a small conversation on that internally, and I don't know that we've yet settled on what an appropriate number would be on an annual basis. We'll continue to look at that number, but as stated here, we originally looked at a hundred and twenty thousand and may think that we would want to back off that number to a small extent to make sure that we have provided appropriate numbers for textbook purchases moving forward. Thirteen, fourteen, the, the numbers remain the same there, as does fifteen, a little bit more information, a breakout in terms of the overall school counselors, we have four full-time equivalent for, for counselors. You see down below, four counselors, three-point-four psychologists, and point-eight as guidance tech, new information that we didn't have previously. Skipping down. The, the one that I think does have a change for us then is nineteen. Sorry, I need to flip to my paper. And we've looked at the, the, the school site funding of the secondary, secondary clerical staff, and originally had thought that we would be able to maintain a two, a two FTE reduction there. With further conversation and analysis, it looks like we may be able to accomplish four. Finding my spot here, I'm on twenty.
I'm sorry. What exactly is secondary clerical staff?
Secretaries. That would be.
Secretaries.
Secretaries, attendants, clerks, counseling clerks, finance clerks, intermediate clerk typists, any of those types of positions, clerk positions at the secondary level.
So, at both ZAN and at Eureka High School?
So, you're talking about reducing by two FTE?
Four.
We are, we are contemplating four now, we'd originally looked at two.
Yeah, okay, four.
District office clerical staff, when we brought this to you originally, had, had put out potentially one or two and have settled on what we think is attainable is a one-point-five FTE reduction there. The question was asked, what's the, the breakout in terms of district office clerical staff? As you can see, educational services has three staff members, business services has eight, with one of those eight positions currently unfilled. Number twenty-one, we've had a chance to go back in, take a closer look at the numbers, and rather than do it on kind of a, an average basis, looked at each of the, the employees there. You see the updated, in terms of certificated management, which is really certificated, non-represented, that's twenty-two point four FTE, ten thousand a day roughly, and approximate savings if we were to reduce that, that work year by five days for those folks of about fifty-two thousand dollars. Same thing with classified management, which I will now call classified, non-represented, that number would turn out to be twenty-eight thousand dollars if we were to reduce each of the folks in those categories by five days a year.
And this is the one, you said that they each work different numbers of days depending on their position, not a set number for the whole two groups.
That's correct. And, and, in observance of that, Wendy, what we did do is, is we took each one, rather than try to, you know, pick the, an average number out there, we did take each person out to see what that would look like.
Okay.
So, these two pages of cuts are not your recommendations, these are just the possibilities of where cuts could be made, and if we were to do all of them, you have down here savings of two-point-five billion, and our goal to balance the budget is one-point-five billion. That is what you said last time.
I'm gonna waffle on that, one-point-five to two, somewhere in that range.
So, not included in these two sheets now that we have, is the eight-hundred thousand and the five-hundred thousand in the capital items columns are not on here anymore?
Right, 'cause this is general fund relief, and those haven't changed from our initial conversation in terms of capital items or things, of course, that we have to put back into property. Should we sell Winsler and/or Worthington, those could be put into, you know, maintaining our.
So, those should never have been put in the general fund approximate savings columns?
It's not, it's, it says capital items under the heading.
And on to the right, it says, you probably can't read it 'cause it's small, but it was on our original sheet, and it's on there, and it says, general fund approximate savings, five-hundred thousand and eight-hundred thousand. And I asked this the other night, I said, are you actually suggesting we put those monies in, sweep them into the general fund and spend them?
No, and, and, and I now understand the question, sorry, and, and I just did not change that heading as we went to a new sheet, so, so thank you for pointing that out, we will make that change. What I would say, and I know that there are lots of viewpoints on if those sales were to occur, how those, those monies could be used, but there could be, in fact, a, a general fund savings there, because we have plenty of maintenance projects and the like that are in front of us, and if we were to sell, for instance, Worthington, that eight-hundred thousand dollars, could go to some of those maintenance projects, which would in turn decrease the load on the general fund.
Projects that are otherwise, without that type of capital money, going to have to come out of the general fund, is what you're saying?
Yes.
That's correct.
So, in effect, it actually does reduce.
Right.
And the categorical fund items, they're not?
No change on those either. I'll try to get them up here.
And the same thing applies there, that some of these items, although they are specifically categorically funded, that if we eliminate some of those items, then it would reduce the, the load on the general fund?
It potentially could, as we discussed last time, if some of the categorical items that are up there now were eliminated, it would then, you know, release some categorical funds to be looked at utilizing in a different way, which could indirectly, so, you know, provide some general fund relief, it's just harder to quantify.
So, other than, now that we've gone over these updated numbers, what more would you like from us tonight in preparation for the twenty-eighth?
Well, I think staff would find it very appreciative if there are certain things that are absolutes in our, you know, that we are able, if we're able to make any of those decisions tonight, I think that would help us fine-tune our, our plan, and whether that's absolute yes, we think that this could be one we want to move forward on, or absolute no, this is one we don't, because I think, you know, that as we further clarify the, the direction the board is gonna support, I think we can do a better job with our fiscal stability plan as well as prepare for our second interim.
With that in mind, there's a couple that I'd like, two or three that I'd like to eliminate from consideration. And starting with the now-named NNDCC, I'd like to still work with HROP to, to reduce the encroachment, but that the program has value beyond just the numbers, and we would, and the numbers are a little higher than I think that we would really save anyway, because we would lose some students. And I got that indication from Hank at an earlier meeting that he felt strongly along those lines too.
I feel strongly about that too.
Yeah, it'd be helpful to hear from all the board members.
And I'm gonna put my two cents worth in and make the statement that I feel strongly that that's a program that, that I would not want to cut, however, and I am sure the cabinet's not gonna really be happy that I say this, but I would love to discuss these items, and I would love to give more direction as to what we would like more information on, but I am not comfortable making decisions with two of our newest board members not here. And as this is a discussion-action item, I would like to make, my opinion is, is that I would not like to take action on any of these items tonight. And I know that we're up against a timeline, and I apologize, but it is.
I agree.
I think it's important that we discuss and not action.
Final decisions. But we could express how we feel.
Yeah, and, and the feedback is, is good to hear from those of us that are present.
Absolutely, it still helps us work, move forward with what we need to.
With that, I don't know what else we can say tonight, except bringing back the information on the twenty-eighth.
Well, opinions, I think we can express opinions.
Knowing how each of us feel about different things is, is helpful too.
I personally would like to express an opinion on, this is the one we just got tonight? Okay, on the sports program, 'cause I know it delineates the number of students in each program and so forth and so on, but I do know, and I will like to say that I missed the last meeting, which was the first of these sessions, but I happened to catch it on television, and I just was flipping through the stations and there we were, and on Saturday or Sunday, whichever day it was, two hours of it, and so, I sat, made all my notes, so I really got a good, I heard everything that went on, and I could make notes and everything. And one of the notes I made at that time on, before we had all of the numbers of students taking, participating and everything, and I'm trying to find that one on here.
Four hundred and eighty-five total participants.
Yeah, but I'm looking at where it says, what's the number of it?
Oh, six.
Number six.
Six, okay, oh, six, I have a comment here. I think our sports program, like our NJRTC program, has a lot of benefit to the community, because it isn't just the students that participate, it's the people that come to the games, and the parents, and the community, and the, and the people who come to the fundraisers and take part in the fundraisers, and, and those kinds of things in it, and I know that the high school does a lot of fundraising for all different things, whether it's ag or whether it's whatever, the, the sports programs or whatever. So, I think that one, and I know it's, it's expensive, but I, I really want to look at that one as far as the community is concerned, and I also think we'd lose students.
We would definitely lose students.
Over the sports program, and, so, anyway, that's my feel, that is my feeling on the sports program. I, I know it's expensive, but I also know that every sport really works hard trying to raise money. In fact, I was at a, some place and expressed the fact that how, oh, I know where I was. I was at, at the pizza parlor up in Henderson Center, and I commented to the manager, because they give, you know, so, so much free when you buy so much, and I commented how much I appreciated the fact that they did that, and he said to me, I really appreciate the fact that we do it, because we really bring in people who participate and buy those tickets, and I think we could actually sell them for more than ten dollars, but I, but I think, I, I just think that, that that's something that we need to take into consideration too, that we do, do a lot of fundraising for our, for our sports, and not just our sports, our drama and our music and all the rest of those, so.
That is another area I wouldn't be interested in cutting for some of the same reasons you said.
Yeah.
And we would lose students, it builds good PR for the, for the Eureka Schools within the community, and we're talking about student fitness, physical fitness, and school morale.
Yeah.
This is another area I'm not interested in looking further at.
And just from my two cents worth, I also would mimic those two comments, and it serves so many students, and so many people are touched by these programs. In addition to the students, we would lose an awful lot of students, and that's, you know, money out of our district. And I will probably not be making a vote on this if it comes to it, because my son just made the JV baseball team as a freshman, so I better join the boosters.
That's not.
Transportation, I had a question about that, is, we were talking about reducing the net encroachment down to one-sixty-six, or that was the number that we started with? We would still, if we reconfigured and we kept it ninety-five percent of the total appropriation, the encroachment would then become one-sixty-six, or we're saving one-sixty-six from what we were encroaching before? Is that a net savings, or that's what it's gonna?
We, we would, we would reduce our encroachment by the hundred and sixty-six thousand, if we were, if we were able to get down to that ninety-five percent of the appropriation number.
And I can say, you know, we just found out about transportation, I think, this morning or yesterday, that it's gonna be funded, and so Dan hasn't had a chance to recalculate what that would look like in terms of trying, you know, he had drawn up proposals on the, the what if we didn't have any, to what if we had a very little bit, but he can now go back and relook at what that might mean if we said to him the same thing, you can't encroach.
And if he does that, I was looking at my calendar, we don't, do we have another board meeting except before the budget workshop? Well, I would like to have that information sent to us ahead of time, whatever it is that Dan comes up with on transportation, sent to us, we can look at it before we have the budget workshop.
And I think there's a number of things, if we, we give you ideas of what else we might be interested in, if we could get a pre-board packet of what we discussed tonight answering these questions.
Yes, yeah, 'cause I know he gave me some information, but he could, I'm sure, do some more about, he gave me some possible savings, but they're like two thousand dollars or twenty-two thousand dollars, but.
So, at the beginning, I mentioned there were three areas, and transportation is the third area. This is a very dangerous area for us to be looking at cutting. Our revenue is driven by ADA, and if we reduce transportation too much or without enough thought, we're gonna increase our absenteeism, and so, any, those savings would only be for the first year, and it could come back to harvest from second year on. So, I don't know what cuts Dan might be thinking of, but I think we need to really think twice before making cuts in this area.
I had one other question, when, on numbers thirteen and fourteen. The thirteen and fourteen, elementary certificated for declining enrollment and maximizing class sizes, you're looking at four FTEs. So, declining enrollment means that you require one less teacher to actually run the programs for the number of students you have. Maximizing class sizes, does that mean to the limit that's allowed, and I'm assuming when you're talking elementary, this means a whole lot more combination classes?
Yes, potentially, that would be the, in fact, and it means.
Thirty-one students.
Make sure that we are up to contractual max in as many classrooms as we can.
Which is thirty, and I think still, and thirty-one with.
Combo is always one student less.
You know how much I love combination classes?
Well, I don't like them either.
I just realized that that's what that actually means, maximizing class sizes, it's kind of.
Well, and it's.
Well, it just depends on what the students are too, you know.
Well, it also means looking at. Well, it also means looking at, you know, how we've been keeping them at 24 because of the class size reduction money. And we talked about that last time.
And it doesn't necessarily mean maximizing class sizes. Depending on how the numbers fall, it could actually mean fewer, I mean combo classes.
Yeah, it could.
It doesn't mean increasing the number of combo classes. It could actually mean fewer combo classes. It all depends on where the numbers fall.
That's right.
But I think the potential exists, so I just think we need to be kind of upfront about it.
But if you're looking at running two classes of 24 students, and you have the option, or three classes of 24 students, but they happen to be K, split between kindergarten and first grade, that's where you wind up with a combination class, just by the very definition of maximizing to the number that you are allowed. You're not going to have two classes of 18 kids.
Well, that's what we're saying we would eliminate, if, as much as possible, and sometimes you don't have a whole lot of control over that.
Absolute a given, but it's, the potential is very...
Mm-hmm, yeah. And are we still, we are still receiving some monies for the lower class sizes, aren't we?
We are.
And if we go up to 30 and 31 in elementary schools, even in the lower grades for second and third, we would lose. Would we still lose, or is it? I never have understood what it meant.
For K3, to participate in class size reduction, at each grade level, you can't have more than 30 on average, so you could have one class that's 31 and ones that are 29 and still have your 30 average. Above 24.95 students, you get paid 70% of the allocation for class size reduction, but you only get paid on the first 20 students for each class. So you could have 26 students in the class, you get 70% of the CSR monies, but for the 20 kids that were in the class, you get nothing for those that are over 20.
Would you mind putting that down and adding that in with the things that we get to look at?
Absolutely.
And I can say, as our contract in grades K3, we couldn't go that high, anyway.
No, we couldn't. No, we couldn't. But this is contract time, and who, you know, who knows? At least we couldn't for next, well...
So between the last meeting and this meeting, there's nothing new on these lists? Nothing popped out that we haven't looked at? This is...
Right.
The only one that I can say that has been brought up that we have looked at previously, because sometimes that's what you go back to, is evaluating the impact that CIS, Center for Independent Study, and Home and Hospital has on the general fund. And I know at times, the board has taken a real strong look at that. It's probably been 10 years ago, I think, or more, but that isn't an area that we initially had thought of, but...
Could we have some figures on that?
Yeah, and that's one area that we, like I said, I think it was 10 years ago or maybe even more.
It's been longer, maybe even longer than that, because I barely remember it.
Oh, great, thanks a lot for...
Oh, I do.
I remember it, but it was where we really did reduce our number of staff in those areas to not encroach.
Right.
So it's one that we could, we have not explored.
So we will? We will look into that?
Yes, we'll take a look at this.
Yes. I mean, there are certainly other things that could be cost-saving measures, but those would have to be part of negotiations, and so that's why they're not on these lists, you know, whether that's, you know, furlough days or any of the things that we've talked about before. For us to move forward with a fiscal stability plan, I felt that it was important for it to be things we can do.
Right.
Versus things that, you know, maybe we could get there through negotiations, but we don't have those agreements yet.
Well, and I don't think the county would look too fondly upon...
Yeah, you can't be the we hope to have. These are things that we can do if we chose to.
That we hope to negotiate this, that, or the other thing. I don't think that would work with the county.
No, it wouldn't be appropriate, but there are those unknowns.
Yeah.
So, anything else to add tonight?
We're accepting donations?
Bake sale?
Maybe you could have one giant fundraiser.
In that case, I think we're adjourned, and we'll be back here at 5 o'clock on February 28th.
Thank you.
Is that what it is? Okay.
I know.
Yes.
So were you told you couldn't let your children play?
Yeah, gave me a ticket to boot, I don't know what.